... All right, so at this time we'll be called to all of the board members of our president. If you'd all please stand and collect your seat and report.
........................................................................ Welcome. Is this your first one for the year?
Mm-hmm.
Is this your first one for the year? You use microspeak loudly.
No.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Gaines and some of you may remember me from last year, but if not, I am this year's Suffolk High School being on the Board of Education. Now I'm listening on the phone. Today we had a club expo that showcased all of the wonderful clubs available to students at the high school. One club in particular that was there was the SAM Club. The SAM Club is Students Assisting Meals on Wheels. I along with two of my friends started the SAM Club last year in honor of our gym teacher, Jamie Early, who passed away. We collect cans and boxed food for drivers and meals on wheels delivered during the day. Last year we collected over 300 cans of food and we hope to collect even more this year. In other news, I would like to congratulate Ms. Sullivan, the French teacher, on receiving the Verizon Innovative Teaching Grammy. She plans to use the money to buy more breakout EDU kits for students with her students. Tomorrow there will be college tables at the high school during lunch. Starting next week there will be senior portraits taken during school. Next Tuesday, September 26th, there will be a meet the teacher night at the high school for people with the last names starting from L to Z. This Saturday, September 23rd, there will be a football game at 7:00 PM at the middle school. Also, the last home football game in the regular season is Sunday, October 1st at 1:00 PM. That is all. Thank you.
Excellent. Well done. Thank you. Stay here, guys. Bye-bye. Okay, so 1.08 minutes of the regular meeting, September 26th, 2017, Chairman McAdams took samples from his staff associated. What can you say? Second, Bonnie, second, Theresa. Sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those have sent you?
I'll stand for that. Yes.
So one extension. We want to see what's not here, otherwise. Okay, we're superintendent's comments.
I'm going to give up my time to a special student that's going to give us a special presentation. Shall we just come in? Well.
Oh, it's fine, sorry. Hello, good evening to the Board of Education members, Superintendent Adams, and to my audience. My name is Michelle Seid and I'm a senior at Suffolk High School and the programmer of the Suffolk Summer Learning Jump Start program. Thank you for letting me and my fellow tutors of the program to share with you some exciting news about the program. The Suffolk Summer Learning Jump Start program is my Girl Scout Holes Award project. And since the summer of 2016, the major objectives of this program are to provide free one-on-one Math, English, and Math tutoring service for at-risk students entering K-6. This program aims to minimize summer learning loss and improve academic performance of minority students and students whose English and Math deficiencies are below grade level in the upcoming school year. Research shows that while gaps in student achievement remain relatively constant during the school year, the gaps widen significantly during the summer for minority students from low-income families. It was an average of about two to three months of learning over the summer in their reading and math skills while their slightly higher income peers lost gains. Most youths lose about two months of math skills in summer and these reading and math losses add up. By fifth grade, about peers who are slightly on the lower income level tend to lose about two and a half to three years of learning. So also another objective was to create a tutoring volunteer program that inspires, equips, and mobilizes high school students to take action that changes the world, engage in philanthropy, and inspire action through service to the community. This program enjoyed great success in 2016 and we received a 100% satisfaction rate from the parents and the students of the program. So in the summer of 2017, I'm excited to expand upon this program by collaborating with this district's elementary schools and beginning of E and L teachers to find students who'd benefit most from this program. The summer of the program experienced unprecedented demands from district parents with children from K-6 grade in Suffolk Central School District. We have received emails from parents from 46 district students who expressed interest in our program. We even received emails and phone calls from the Suffolk Free Library because many families had inquiries about the program at the Suffolk Children's Library. My tutors and I believe education is the gateway to achieve social equality in our society. I remember reading an article in the 2017 July/August issue of Reader's Digest by General Colin L. Powell. This is what he said in the article. "Reaching young people requires conviction that they are capable of success. Children have a way of doing when adults are giving up on them. Educators have told us most children arrive in kindergarten smiling and hungry for learning, but many lack basic skills and feel dismissed and disfounded. By the third grade, the light can go out of their eyes. It is only a sense of possibility that can rekindle that flame." The goal of my program is to try to reinforce their basic skills in the summer and maintain the sense of possibility for these children. So for right now, I would like anyone who's participated in this program to just please stand up for a moment. I hope you all understand how helpful you have been to me and this program really could not have been done without you all. And so I would like to just present a couple slides right now. So this is, so this is really just showing some of the highlights of my program this year. So we really collaborated with Viola Elementary School, Cherry Lane, and Montebello. However, we received almost all of our students from Viola and Montebello. So this is the Cherry Lane principal, Ms. Aguilar. I hate those myself. And then this is the Montebello Elementary School teachers I met with, Dr. Ivy, and also the two Ms. Pell, the reading specialist, and Ms. Refrady, the ENL specialist. And then this is Viola Elementary School, obviously with this dress and this happened. And then, so again, we received 46 emails inquiring about the program. However, we could only enroll 17 students and we recruited 18 high school students to volunteer as tutors. So these are just some quotes that I got from these tutors about the program. Paul, which is in our audience today. "I am glad to be able to be part of this program this summer to help students out with their work and what they may have found most difficult. I thought it was great to give kids a jump start in the next school year. It also helped them catch up on skills they were lacking. I love being able to encourage kids in complete progress." Dorian, who cannot be here tonight because of, a lot of the tutors who are not here have other commitments such as studying and also a lot of them play ball sports. So I participated in the Summer Learning Jump Start program for two summers. The program is one of my favorite parts of the summer since the students being tutor appreciate the work that the tutors did. This program is making a difference in the education of my new students. And then this is Armand, he, again, is not here tonight. "I am very appreciative of the Summer Learning Jump Start program. Not only was it a chance to give back to the community, but it was also a chance to meet and attract new people." Justin Lee, who's also not here tonight. "I have attended this program for two years. Each time I've enjoyed not only being able to teach others, but to learn more about the students." Esha Maywall, who is not here tonight. "I have been part of the Summer Learning Jump Start program for two years and I love it. This program allows me to give back to my community in the best way possible through education. It is a very rewarding and enjoyable experience." Shishmi Jhendhar, who's an incoming freshman at Suffolk High School, who's some of our new recruiters. "I enjoyed the program this summer and I'm absolutely enjoying it. I love how I get to connect with kids of different ages and personalities. This program is a wonderful way for students to express their inner creativity and capabilities through a summer of enrichment. I can't wait to continue tutoring her and branch out to others." Andrew Bear, who's also a freshman who is in our audience. "This program is an excellent opportunity for kids who need academic support in the summer. After working with a few kids over the summer, I was able to see the positive influence this program has had." And it's actually part of, who is not here tonight. "The Summer Learning Jump Start program has really impacted my way of thinking. Being able to work with a student one-on-one, helping to understand the true meaning of learning, means connecting with my student and guiding them in their own discovery of knowledge." So this is Tyler Boe. I apologize for these many quotes, I know. "I thought this summer program for me and the student I taught, I learned more on how to teach and convey information together while also giving back to the community. I think this program is a good experience for everyone and anyone." And so these are some of your photos that we took of, or actually my mom took them because, you know, it's helping to tutor the kids. I'm here, this is, the girl I'm helping, or the high school girl I'm helping, is a newer tutor. I had her come to the program this year. So a lot of times I had to play the role of helping them learn how to tutor other kids because it's hard, honestly, like trying to engage kids into learning over the summer on Saturday morning is not the easiest thing in the world. And then we also took a group photo, which everyone was actually here for that person. And then I would like to thank you to my project advisor, Ms. Hammond. Ms. Hammond has been our project advisor since 2016. She volunteered her time to help tutor students every Saturday morning this summer. This program would not have reached such great success without her involvement and support. So I'd like to give a special salute to Ms. Hammond, a devoted educator and role model of everyone in Suffolk Central School District. Thank you so much. Oh, yeah, if you'd like, can you guys come up here for a picture? Ms. Hammond.
One more. Here. Thank you so much, guys. Congratulations. Good job.
Excellent. Thank you very much. That was probably one of the most impressive things we've seen from these kids, you know, not only teaching the younger kids but engaging the older kids and some young kids, to students, to teach the kids that need it over the summer and so forth. Thank you, Ms. Hammond, of course, you know, with that dear support you do so much for the district, we really appreciate you. Thank you, thank you for the presentation. Okay, so public participation, this is public participation as to action items only. Public participation as to actions item only, those are items 2.01 through 2.2.2.15, is that correct? Okay, 2.01 through 2.15. Time to finish in the last 30 minutes, please. If you would like to address any one of those items, action items, please step up to the podium, state your name, school affiliation, address your marks to the board, speak up or use the microphone, I don't know if it's working or not. And again, pursuant to policies, 12:30, 1400, 30, 240, please bring your phone, comment anything regarding any specific district personnel or student.
Hi. My name is Cheryl Lenti, I'm a student in the high school and I too have a graduate in Suffolk High School as well. I'm honestly here to address the potential that we may be charging our PTAs going forward for the use of the school facilities. This has come up in the past. We were able to address it and work directly with the VOE as well as Dr. Adams and at the time, Mr. Seibert as well, to really discuss and understand the impact of the PTAs. So I hope the VOE at this time will also consider that impact. We've worked very hard, we do have limited budgets. I understand that it's only for custodial costs of the weekends. I'll be hedging to work around that to really minimize the cost, but we have limited funds as well. And I hope that where we can find the extra money to support the PTAs, I hope we can do that. Thank you. Thank you.
Jeanette Kuno, Suffolk High School PTA. I'm the past president of PTA for elementary, middle school, high school, and council. And I echo what Cheryl Lenti shared, and I also would say they're really grossing unfair toward PTAs to do this to them now when they've already prepared their budgets for the year. They have all their contracts signed, they did not plan for this to happen, and they were assured that we would proceed as it has in the past, we would be given the allowance to do these programs. And some of them can't be moved to weeknight because of the nature of when they do. We're trying to reach out to people to move into our community and support our schools, our new name. Our community is behind us when we do these events. We have home festivals and other things that take place at all the schools that the community buys into and supports us, and it would really be terrible to do this to the PTAs at this time. So if you're going to discuss it, I hope we table it until we at least have our meeting. Someone bear the voice for the ones that can't be here tonight. Connor has a meet the teacher night, I don't know if some of the other presidents are not going to be here tonight either, but it's definitely something that we will be addressing at the next council meeting, which will be October 4th. And the library at Suffolk Middle School, we encourage all of you to come, that we can partner together and work on a solution that will work for all of us.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll close that portion of the meeting, just, you know, the public comment part of the meeting, it's, we don't go back and forth, but comment has surprised most of you, not all of you know. But, you know, we are listening, we can hear, we say, there is no action tonight per se on the fees. So I know there is the policy 1500, but the fees and what have you are set in accord from that. So the actions board statement tonight is unrelated, so as far as working with the district, always. So, okay, so with respect to, oh, action, so I'm going to poll 2.04 and 2.05 for separate vote. Okay, so just so the record's clear, because Angela's here, keeps me straight. 2.01 through 2.03 and 2.06, 2.15. I'd like to use consent agenda as to those items only, that is excluding 2.04 and 2.05. There's no objection, Chair, we're going to motion to accept those as so stated. Call?
Yes.
Call.
Sorry, floor.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, aye. Call for a second. Call for a second. Everybody aye. You have, thank you. Okay, so 2.04. 2.04, Chair, that's the policy manual update, this is the second meeting, the policy manual, first meeting was last month, or last meeting. Chair, we're going to motion to accept 2.04 as so stated. Uh, hmm. Call?
Okay.
Oh, that was, sorry, I'm actually. Matt?
Yes, we look alike.
Teresa, was that the second?
Yes.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Any discussion on 2.04, anything contained within 2.04? Or, I mean, I don't know if Teresa's chair of the policy committee, if you want to begin, I'm not sure who has questions.
So I think we see any questions on email as we discussed in the last meeting, so if there's any questions now, then I guess we'll respond as they come.
Okay. So, Armand.
Okay, so my discussion is regarding one particular policy, 1500, that we have in front of us for vote today, and I disagree that it's not related to public comments, it is directly related to public comments because it gives, basically the ad clause gives our superintendent, whoever that is, now and in the future, can I grab that from the floor?
Yeah, of course. I ran out of my microphone.
Thank you. Okay, so we just added a phrase and it states, "The superintendent of schools shall establish reasonable regulations which include appropriate user fees for the use of all the school district buildings and grounds by authorized users." So the PTA fees that were presented today in public comments would fall under that clause. So basically the superintendent will be able to impose fees at will, as seen necessarily. So it is directly related to the PTA fees that are being imposed now. And originally, a letter had gone out to our PTA units as well as council stating there would be a change in procedures to be on the lookout for possible fees, et cetera, et cetera. And then that letter was retracted and units and council were told that that letter went out in error, it didn't apply to PTA units, and that they will go through the usual approval process for facility use, which they have been for years. Nevertheless, now as they are applying for these facilities requests, they are being informed, now that this meeting was started, that there would be fees for custodial help and opening the buildings on days when they wouldn't normally be open. And I personally have questioned that and inquired if Saturdays, if that would apply to Saturdays, and I had to be told in a meeting where we all sat, that those fees wouldn't apply Saturdays, would apply Sundays. So that was my understanding, you know, as a court member, that fees would incur on Sunday events only and not Saturdays, but I'm informed and we received correspondence from some of our units that now when they apply for their home festival on a Saturday or their, you know, Halloween Day or their, you know, whatever the event is, a community event that brings students to the building on a Saturday, they are now going to incur per custodian, per hour, charges. That, first of all, I don't recall us budgeting for that revenue originally in this use budget, at least I didn't see that. And definitely our units did not budget for that cost to be incurred. And it may sound like I'm going to drop this bucket, $50 an hour, or I'm not sure exactly what the, these numbers were thrown out, I don't know if they're accurate, per custodian per hour, but it could mean losing all the profit from an event run by PTA volunteers, parents, and teachers, and at times students as well, could be all the revenue they were going to make and could be actually bringing the event to an actual loss. And since they haven't budgeted for that, they can't really incur those charges, which they were not informed. At least, you know, nobody seems to have seen anything that informed them of this change of procedures. And basically, the policy would allow things like that to be thrusted without prior, you know, board approval and, you know, discussions in the community as to what can, cannot be done. When we talk about our PTAs specifically, I must say that we are aware and we all support our PTA's role in our district, which has been a terrific role. It has brought parents and teachers, administrators alike, together. It has bridged the community relationships with our district, which is something we are trying to do as part of our strategic planning. Our PTAs have always put a great name for this district wherever they've gone and represent this district as best as possible. And any dollar of revenue that PTA's make comes back directly to the district and the students, all students. So there is a profit made by anyone. Everybody who runs this PTA business is a volunteer and has given up their time and effort and work and dedication for a long time, and this is what we want here. We want, we want those volunteers to continue to be successful and to continue to be able to bring progress for the children that may not be during the regular school day, to continue to bring communities together and events that may have to happen on a Saturday, because that's what we want. We want the community to be strong, and we want the community to be well-served, and we want to bring school and home together with everything we do. The other part of this is, you know, we are familiar that the state of New York just submitted its SL plans to the federal government, and top priority in the state of New York's SL plans presented Monday was encouraging and building family engagement and that using family engagement as a critical component of an indicator whether a school district is actually accountable and successful or not. So for us to be accountable and successful, that family engagement piece is priority and very important. So at what cost are we making a few extra bucks? And what's the pro and con? We have to weigh the advantage and the disadvantage. Do we continue what we've done historically, supporting these events and taking on maybe a little bit of the cost to open a building on a Saturday here and there for our PTA to conduct an event that benefits our students and our children? Or do we tax them with that fee that I don't think will make a huge difference in our district budget, but could really make a break in PTA debt? Thank you.
So, I don't have any questions, although I would say that one of these needs to be discussed with that power rank exam was, that's been the process anyway, and the fees are separate from this. So yes, the fees will be allotted and we can have discussion on those fees, however, that was practiced as far as what was being done anyway, the superintendent did it. So we can make a decision when we want to do it. We can have further discussions on the fees, et cetera. I don't disagree with what you said, but when it comes to policy, the reason that we added was every time is going to change something, you have to come to us, whether it's going on for years in the district, and have in discretion to make the decision if he, if he feels that somebody should or shouldn't be charged or falls outside of the scope of the different parameters that are set up. So that was the main reason. I don't disagree with the given of PTA, supporting them for volunteerism, that's not the question. But I don't have any specific.
Explain to Viola, thank you, that's exactly what I think we all were. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I'm in, I as well, you know, in the community, we grab and we goes back and forth, and the only change, there's always been a, arguably a charge for district use, it's always been cost of heat, electricity, maintenance, custodial services, and any other expenses associated with the use. And although we haven't charged the PTAs with that because they're like one degree of separation from the kids or the students. The only thing changed in this policy here is it puts in there the authority of something that's been going on anyway. So it was either we put it in or don't put it in, but if we didn't put it in, it still would have been the same, it still would have been conducted into regulation, it still would have, which is the administration's responsibility. So, you know, the fact that these fees are set in regulations, like I said, the only change is to say, yes, you can do that. We're doing it anyway. Now, that being said, the regulation isn't just applied to the school board because the regulation has to conform to policy. Okay, so, you know, if the regulation is established and as a board we're like, well, it's not really promoting what we want, which is, and that, you know, it's, it doesn't even necessarily have to be said, that we support the PTAs, I think all of us probably went up the ranks in the PTAs here. So we can still review the regulations. It's not that it's just theirs and theirs alone and we can't change it or object to it. So, again, it doesn't really change via policy necessarily, so without going into detail about that.
Just to clarify one thing, so, because I know you just said it, I think, Matt, I heard you asked a question about the Saturday versus the Sunday. Are we charging for use on Saturdays? Because I think the impression was that it was just Sundays because we already have a custodian. I thought, I heard that it was a floating custodian, so I just want to get that, so we're a one-stick, I don't know. And if we don't have an answer now, we can discuss it.
We have a custodian at the middle school on almost every Saturday, and we have a custodian at the high school almost every Saturday. We don't have, typically we don't have custodians at the elementary schools. So to the extent that a custodian would need to be brought in, then that is if a cost is incurred by the district. And just to clarify something, the regulation is... And just to clarify something, the regulation that's on the books right now for the school district, and has been on the books since 1996, says, I just want to be accurate, that when it comes to the fee schedule, it says, "PTA, no charge," which we agree with, "except custodial overtime." So, the regulation that's on the books right now in the district, and has been such since 1996, says that there is a charge for custodial overtime. Now, when PTAs have approached me in the past, and I don't know if Cheryl can confirm this, there is a provision under the old policy and under the new policy to waive these fees. And in the past, I have waived the fees. I don't recall a single instance where I have not waived a fee that the PTAs approached me on. So that waiver's in the policy now, it's in the old policy. But what applies, regulation applies since November of 1996, says that the PTAs are to be charged for overtime, unless it's waived by the superintendent. Now, in terms of reviewing our facility's use in a broad way, we've discovered there have been instances where things have not been charged in the past. But what the regulation says is it will be charged, and then it can be waived. And so, right now, unless somebody comes to me, the current regulation says I have to charge for overtime. That's her.
Okay, oh, sorry. Thank you. Okay, so, Dr. Adams, if I understand correctly, so regulation has been in existence all along?
Yes.
And that you, as well as superintendents before you, have given PTAs the courtesy to waive these charges, believing that in permission and in work in the district, that would justify the cost versus the gain. I would imagine that was your, you know, vision when you decided to waive it in the past.
We, we would have conversations, like, there was one time where the PTA wanted to do a two-day carnival. And so we talked it through, and said, you know, going fourteen hours over two days, that's a significant cost, is there a way to do this in one day? And the PTA was, you know, very kind, saying, "We can do it in one day." So, you know, I want to make sure that this is balanced throughout the district, so that if there's one PTA that wants to have every Saturday for twenty consecutive Saturdays, I want to make sure that there's equity involved, so that we share that amongst the final.
I wish we had volunteers to man twenty consecutive Saturdays. Any PTA volunteers, including everyone at this table, would agree that would be impossible. Well, lucky if we could get twenty hours a year. It's become harder and harder to find volunteers, and so I doubt that's going to be a problem, excessive use. But if it's given a situation like what you're recounting, where there was a little excessive use over a weekend, I'm sure that's worth a discussion. But again, the benefits that you waived, that outweighed the expense in the past, continue to be more so than ever. The benefits of having a community involvement in our buildings is more and more than ever before, as we all agree. And nice it sees it that way, you see it this way, our strategic plan sees it that way, we all agree. So I think that this conversation is very important. What was reported is excessive use, but like one facility use that we were told about application was informed that would incur custodial fees. So if you could step into that, and maybe give that instruction to our administrators and staff, so that they follow the policy or the regulations the way you intend to follow it, and there's a little more clarity, so they can budget, because they're dealing with like fifty cents and a dollar here and there. Every penny counts, and we need to be very clear ahead, so they know what expectations are. Because they've signed contracts with vendors that will want what they want, ask for those contracts.
And just to clarify that, if a distribution is following the policy, the policy says charge. So the point is, we're appealing to Dr. Adams, and then having that discussion to say, okay, listen, it's going to cost us X amount of dollars in overtime, if you want it on X this, X this, can we move to this? There should just be that.
Right, but that, but that wasn't even offered. What was offered is, this has got to cost you, and this is what it costs twice. So I want, I want clarity, and I want, if you are in fact waiving reasonable charges that have occurred in the past and hasn't changed, and you agreed in the past to waive it, please continue doing that, courtesy to our PTAs that serve our buildings and our students. Reach foundation, organizations like that, I'll throw this out there, that benefit the district that no one else. You know, the benefits are not going out of these doors. Our school building should be qualified and should be top of our, where we want to spend money.
And we have waived those fees in the past, so.
We want to continue to do that.
And I think the opposite of what you're saying, what Target's willing to, is if you didn't have a policy in place that you then couldn't go back to someone that wanted to use it for two or three days and say no. So, you know, I.
I'm not talking about exaggeration, absolutely.
No, 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 I'm just saying, that's why it's there, and then.
But now it's being reinforced for our custodian, which you're saying you're willing to waive, tell us what you need to talk to PTAs, and I'm sure councils can, can have a discussion, or PTA can.
And if you look at the regulations, how they're developing them, because they're developing the 1996 regulations, it's, it's geared, it's towards that, like I said before, it's like the one degree of separation from the students. You know, they don't, that's really where they're going with it. So, give them a chance to, to work that through. And if any of the PTAs have an issue, you know, go to Dr. Adams.
Speaking of those issues, so this is priority.
Because what, what the staff will do is, they'll follow the regulations that have been in effect for, I guess, over twenty years, and there will be that initial charge. And I think the only difference is, it used to be thirty-eight dollars an hour for custodial overtime, but, you know, the salary will be different, so it says fifty. So, the people in the facilities are following the policy, and then just the next thing would be, if there's a line within the new policy and the old policy that says, just request a waiver from superintendent.
So you want them to submit a waiver with the facility?
What, what? Well.
Can, can we have instructions here? That, that would be very helpful there. Everybody saves everybody's time, and easier on our staff and our, and our volunteers equally, because there were no instructions, there was no notification before. Remember, there was a letter that was retracted, there was nothing that replaced it. So, it's surprising to everyone, they're not prepared for it. If we're proactive and give them something to follow, I'm sure they're happy to follow it. Thank you.
All right, so all those favors, you can say aye.
But can we pull one policy out of the rest, because I intend to vote it from them? Is that doable? Thank you. Fifteen hundred would be that one.
So does pull one policy?
Yeah, yeah, out of consent.
All right, so, well, I consent, but I did make a motion to approve all of those. Those three together, and the left, I'm going to have to. So, just so you can clarify the record, and I'll probably mess up rules in some fashion. What I'll do is, I'll make a chartered motion to pull fifteen hundred for a separate vote. Amani first, Teresa second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
Opposed.
I'm sorry. One opposition and one question asked. As to fifteen hundred, now, back to the original one. Respect to the balance of policies set forth in 2.04. Chartered motion, we already moved, so, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Unanims. Is that clear enough? Okay. Two point zero five. Chartered motion to accept, two point zero five, I associate it. Clark, second. Teresa? Here's something over there, but I can't see anybody, so. Second, Teresa?
Matt second.
Second, Matt.
Matt.
Any discussion?
Yes.
On two point zero five, Matt.
Matt did second. Yes. I just have a few questions. In reviewing this, and I'm pretty sure we've discussed this in the brief in the past, but I'd like to have the discussion ready. This is the fourth year of this contract extension.
Correct.
So, what year left? So what I just want to know, so everybody understands, the process for the contractor. So every year when this comes up, what is the actual process for renewal? Or is it simply just to say that we have an next-year extension, we're just going to renew it, check the box, and move on? I'd like to know what the current application to Aramar is in relation to that extension, for the next year, which is the last of the extension, and then after that, what would happen in terms of, you know, looking for other food service providers, et cetera? And the third point is really explaining that process into what PTA of really going out into the market and looking for alternate food service providers.
Okay, with the, the increase each year on these extensions, the basic increase is tied to CPI, but the department of the New York State that handles food service contracts can also make modifications based upon any federal adjustments to the pre, or preschool lunch program. So I think this year is maybe one point zeros is the increase. The, the process with that on an annual basis is very highly regulated, with all the forms we have to use for the state. And sometimes, when we renew a program, it's one or two pages. This is fifty pages long, but it's, so it's really structured by the state. We do have one more year left in this, so the extension is automatic unless we have cause to get rid of the company. And we haven't had demonstrated cause. You know, there's been some issues that have brought to our attention, and we've tried to address those. And I think this year, for the first time, we have a school lunch, school breakfast program in all seven buildings, which I think we added three this year. But we don't have anything for cause to get rid of the company. So we have one more extension, and then we'll be ready to go through this application process. And a lot of things, we, we belong to a consortium where you can buy supplies at a discounted rate. We, through the assistance of New York State, there's this, I forget, I don't recall the name of the consortium in particular, but what they try to do is, when they know that we're going out for bid, they inform in a much broader way for other food service companies. And historically, for the last fifteen or twenty years, it's been between two, Woodsons and Aramar. As maybe just a byproduct of the region that we're in, perhaps there's other food service companies, but our choices, even though we try through this consortium to broaden our advertising, we seem to be limited to the same two companies on the bidding process.
So, who is saying those providers?
Saying what?
Those, those two providers that are your only options, I mean, that's mandated by the state.
Not mandated?
Is that just what's, what we believe is, is, you know, what makes the most sense for the district because of where we are?
No, no.
But we, we try and get other vendors to come in through this broader advertising, through this consortium. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you want to look at it, only two companies have bid on this over the last fifteen or twenty years, Aramar and Woodsons. Do you know approximately how many are part of the consortium?
Well, the consortium's national, so I, you know, I can get that information.
Or how many are in our region?
In our region, I'll get that information from there. The state also gives us guidelines as to who approved vendors are. So, you and I can't say I'm a company, and bid on this is to be the low bidders, but, so it's very regulated from the state, but we'll get to the names, and maybe we can check to see who are the county. Because I know when we picked up Aramar, another district in the county that was using Aramar got Woodsons.
I mean, I would imagine that there are varying levels of degrees of provider, what they offer, and the quality and everything else, I mean, just like anything else you could have for bid. I would imagine that there's a lot of, there's a lot of options out there. And maybe one of the issues is their willingness to come here, or to, you know, to put out a bid, or, you know. So I'm not sure, again, I just want to get more information, because I, you know, when the time comes, it's something that I would like to look at a bit more, a bit more closely, and, you know, really take a nice deep dive into what we do provide here in this district. And I'm not saying Aramar is, is bad, I'm just saying, is there better? And it's something that, again, that I'd be very interested in looking at when the time comes.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to get the information on the other vendors, and especially here in the county, and then see in terms of the broader reach, if there's other vendors that might be interested in that.
And the thing is, we can't, we can't turn them around, but we can't pick and choose. You know, we, we have the application process, it's a crazy process, it's a rather, rather large, and I'm saying that it's really got extra, extra application or bid process, and it's extremely detailed. And so, the companies look at that and say, okay, I can give you that for this price. And then we're also stuck in that those responsible, we had our type of health, you know, issue. So, sometimes it's, and it's always been Aramar, I think they were similar like all by Woodsons.
We have Woodsons.
We have, right, it's Woodsons and then Aramar, they always go, kind of go back and forth by like a couple cents.
So I'd be curious, so I'd be curious to see what the application looks like.
Sure.
What, where, or where maybe I'm, maybe I'm finding open, or that I want to choose. But, I mean, if, if it's very specific, and there are things that we're, again, I haven't seen as well, no. But are there things that they're asking in terms of the type of food, is it organic, is it not? I haven't known. But if those are the type of questions that are being asked, then you're going to obviously, you know, some are going to step away, some are going to say, I can search to provide you with what they're looking for. So, just want to take a look.
We'll try to get that information, it might be a great idea for you that they sit on the committee to help with the process.
Let me see the application first, and then I'll make a decision.
Oh, no backing out there.
All right, so let's, let's move on. All those in favor, if we stretch to two point zero five, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, abstentions, unanimous, thank you.
Need to share something.
Three point zero one, three kindergarten.
Teresa?
Yes.
Just a quick, quick thing I need to share. So, unfortunately, I have to inform my board members, colleagues, that I will not be able to attend this convention. We took a vote last time, September fifth. The vote happened that there was not one room to be had in town, or even surrounding facilities. And I negotiated Airbnb at my best recommendation to look at Airbnb. There were certain restrictions that are imposed also by the boarding in our vote that prevented that as well. So, I didn't have the flexibility to be able to attend this, and I really regret that we will not be able to most likely be represented unless another board member has better luck than me. I've really spent quite a bit of time looking for a place to stay.
I sent you an email.
Call everyone.
I was speaking at a social meeting, and they had, it's apparently they're, they're kind of, I must take it for this one. I think they already have it there, because there's.
It's limited, yeah.
Hotels, we would think they had, they have a lot of venues and stuff. There really aren't, and a lot of people are being, are unable to go because they can't find any place to stay. So it's not just, it's not just you, it's everywhere. When I sent you that email, though, they said that next day, or whatever it was, that things were kind of, people were dropping out and stuff like that, but.
And we, let's settle a bunch, if anything changes, I will contact you, let you know. We have local registrations, so nobody has consent, and that's why I said, don't register me, because it's looking bad, looking very bad, as far as accommodations. I'm going to make a recommendation, because we still have a capital conference in January, and we have the national convention coming up. If you're worried of avoiding running out of housing, these, these organizations don't allow you to go into the pool of hotel rooms until you register.
Right, the problem with ESF is, is by the time our, our meeting is, on, it'll be July, there's no housing. It's notorious, the next day after it opens, which is on June fifteenth, where we can't hold on because we have new programs coming on and a new budget. And I also, I feel like they do it on purpose, because all four meetings they meet in July, for the reorg meeting. So, it is some of an issue always with ESF.
So if you haven't scheduled, but compared to the reorg in July to when we voted September fifth, I think that's a long time. If we can, moving forward, be organized to vote, one second, in, in the reorg meeting. If we can, moving forward, be organized to vote, one second, in the reorg meeting, what money is available, how many people can go to each event, that just vote on that with no names and then people can plan, it would take, you know, replace the chaos of the last minute and not have to pay high registration fees because we're past the early bird.
And I think I said at the reorg meeting, if anybody was interested in going, we would commit to board members going, but nobody really could give me an answer.
I think let's, let's have a vote and if we can go regardless of people.
I'll continue.
One second, if we can go regardless of people, I appreciate you just finishing my sentence.
It's just not the agenda for this question.
Sorry, it's not this going on. I'm just informing my board colleagues that this is happening because people are assuming I'm going and rather than emails back and forth, I want to hear if anybody has something else to say or wants to try or has another contact there. But also limiting the amounts per room besides what the conference rates are is another limitation that we should look into next time.
It's a federal, federal.
Right, but it did say that, go.
Actually, we went above the federal guidelines to 210.
Right.
It was only like 1E.
We shouldn't do either.
So we went above.
We should, the federal.
That's not remote.
The federal regulation, I'm saying, federal regulation says for the conference rate. So that would give people the flexibility to get a go.
Which is why.
It's a federal conference.
So anyway, 3.01.
We can do a better job.
Free kindergarten, please.
I just wanted to share an update on our free kindergarten program. We have 37 students enrolled in the free K program, 20 in the AM session and 17 in the PM session. It is going beautifully, pickup, drop off, their time spent there. I think kids are so excited to be there, the staff is so excited. Viola did a tremendous job getting ready for them, the teachers, the principal. They really, you know, this was a top priority, building the ground, supporting them, making sure everything was really set up for the kids to come in. Everyone worked together and did a really tremendous job and it's going beautifully. In addition, we had a really significant increase this year in our overall UPK applications. We had 170 students apply for UPK, which is a number we haven't seen since 2012, 13. So that's very exciting.
Wait, what year?
It's the largest number we've had apply since 2012, 13 school year.
In that, because those were students.
That's for this, that applied for UPK and through our small increase we received in Title I funds, we were able to provide spots for all 170 students, which are the highest number of students we have ever provided by the free K. Even back in 2012, 13, when the applications were that high, we weren't able to fund them. So that's really exciting.
So we had 37, 20 and 17. Did we turn away any applicants for ours and did any drop out?
Um, do we turn, everyone who had us as their first choice got us. Everyone who had us as their second choice, who didn't get their first choice, got us. In the third choice, it gets a little. And that just had to do with if they insisted on AM for really, and that's why AM's a little bit bigger. We do still have a waiting list, some of, but we have about a half a dozen in our PM that are waiting to see if anyone drops out of the morning session that want to move into the morning, but that's just a time of death.
That's one of the reasons I'm asking, if we have 20 in the morning, do we not have three for the afternoon that we could have fit still?
Well, if we had 20, we would have had to put another eight in. We actually have room for one more person, one more child without putting another eight in. And there were two CPS E placements that affected that number.
Ratios.
Yeah.
Thank you. And nobody dropped out?
Nobody dropped out.
Nobody dropped out.
So what was the number for UPK applications in total?
170.
And we accommodated how many?
170.
No, out of our own.
Oh, how, no, how many? So ask your question again about how many applications.
So UPK in general was 170.
Correct.
That did not necessarily want our school district, but.
170 total.
Total. And then for our school district, what's the total?
I don't know how, honestly, I don't know if the 37, exactly how many were first choice for us. I'm going to, I, it was, I'm going to say it was between 22 and 25.
Do you think that maybe having half day instead of full day was a deterrent to a large number of the 170?
I know that it was, yes, absolutely.
Would you make a recommendation to extend this to a full day?
If you have maybe half a million dollars. I mean, I, you know, it's, we provide full day care, we talked about the crisis and you're talking about if we do full day, you're talking about half the number of kids, just the amount of staff.
The cost would be the prohibitive factor?
Absolutely.
That's it.
I mean, space is a little bit, but cost is the truly prohibitive factor.
Space, we have empty classrooms in other buildings, so.
There's also some considerations we would have to make in terms of UPK is a two and a half hour program everywhere. So what are we doing during the other hours? Who's staffing that? I mean, that's a really kind of deep discussion about are we, are we babysitting or are we teaching?
Are we looking into maybe as a way to attract some of those families to stay in house, providing teaching in a segment of the day and tuition based for the rest of the day?
We cannot accept tuition from ramo central residents, except for central residents, excuse me, any resident student, we cannot charge them anything.
Even if there's a different type of programming?
We cannot collect money from our own tax papers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions? Maybe? Okay, thank you. Okay, 3.02, pool renovations update. I believe Mr. Share, you're going to handle it. Thank you.
Actually, I wanted to, if you can pull it up, but yeah, I'm going to put the picture up for you. And I'll first just show the picture and then we'll get to the presentation. Because we've been, for the last, last Wednesday, the pool on the left. Today is pool on the right. We're at the Department of Health here tomorrow testing and we, you know, it's been like grabbing for the ring, we kept feeling it, we were going to get it every day. We do feel that we should, we should be all set to open this pool up. And you can see the difference in the last seven days. Now kind of taking a step back to, you know, where we were on September 13th and why so much has occurred in these seven days. This project, and I'm going to take a step back, if you want to put up the document. First of all, this is a pool that was installed in 1972 and was last updated in 2004. So this is not something we normally get involved with emptying the pool, refilling the pool. So in the budget, we put aside approximately a little over $100,000 to take care of this entire job, which even though the water is where we've been consuming good time, most of the work was involved in taking out the existing aggregate bottom that was there, cutting new race lines around the gutters, acid washing, putting down new binding, putting down a new diamond grade, is what the product is, that's used a lot of places, that's kind of a blue aggregate, kind of gets that blue color that you know, have and want. And then around August 11th, the water was added to the pool. So even though it was a tight construction timeframe and obviously you never have enough time in construction, you always want more time. The fact we were filling the pool on August 11th, you know, in all honesty, we were kind of moving, we said, okay, this seems to be going along, you know, what's going on with the other several projects? Let's just keep testing the water, follow the treatment plan that was given to us by the installer. And initially it looked fine, not as good as it does today, but it didn't have a green tinge. And the testing results were fairly accurate. The Department of Health at that point said, you don't, we don't need you to come into open the pool. You just, we come around on our normal schedule and we'll review the records when we come. We were starting then to see a cloudiness to the water. And in all honesty, within a very short period of time, within a few days, some of the readings, and it was really three, I've come to learn, that are most important, pH, chlorine and alkalinity. We were always, two of the three were fine, but the other one was a little high. And I've come to learn, when you fight one thing, you end up, it's like whacking on the road, you know, something else pops up because of not correctly handling the first thing or over hitting the first thing. So this was the frustration we were dealing with. Even on Labor Day weekend, we thought we were, you know, it takes, we're so close, we should be able to open this pool right after Labor Day. And then it was a few days later. Well, I've come to find out on September 5th, DOH, Department of Health, they come to the site, we were doing lab tests right earlier. I'll get to lab tests in a little bit also as a follow-up. But by the 13th, our alkalinity was still high and DOH said, you cannot open the pool until you get your alkalinity to a lower level. In all honesty, we were now getting frustrated by the installer. And one of the things I learned was there's a difference between pools surfacing and pool, people who do pool installations and aquatics companies who know water really well. At least our company, very strong on installation, very strong on resurfacing, but we were very frustrated because they're, they're our guy, they're our expert and yet we knew this should not be taken three weeks to get this pool on, which it shouldn't. We contacted, and he actually let us know who was handling the Clarkstown pool. And starting on the 13th, we went to two other companies, one local testing company and a company out of New Jersey who we've been, has guided us going forward since the 13th. The first word he sent on the 13th was a word we hadn't heard over previous four, three weeks, which was phosphates. Even though that's not one of the big three, he said, you got to get your phosphate numbers down because any kind of treatments you're doing with high phosphates, you're going to get false positive. You're, you know, you might have put three times the chlorine in, you're not supposed to put three times the chlorine because you're fighting these phosphates, even though that's not one of the triggers that will make the health department open the pool, it's what can bring you out of balance, I've come to find out. So we've been aggressively attacking those, almost excluding everything else, and it's been bringing everything else together. It's been amazing to see without touching the output, it's coming down. And then of course, the visual, seeing the color. We now feel all the levels are where they need to be. The color is what you'd expect to see, you know, enticing, you know, the cool, want to swim in. There was a little bit of a, was it, I wouldn't even say cloudiness, more of a haziness. We know what that was from, it was from the phosphate minus we were using. But we were told after one more day of running it, that should go away. And we feel tomorrow, hopefully, you know, the Health Department will give us the go ahead to open the pool. And when I mentioned the lab testing, because part of this is, well, what can we learn from this process? In the past, I never realized, we could go a whole year, we're just, not just, but basically doing hand tests at the pool themselves. That's all the Health Department needs to see is a log of those tests. There's no requirement for lab tests on a regular basis. Maybe, you know, we kind of talked internally that maybe we want to put that in place. At least once a month, we get a higher level accuracy on our tests, more, you know, grander, whatever the word is, that you're really getting deeper information. Because, you know, if we're just hitting the big three and there's other stuff that's kind of going on, we're not pool experts, we know, you know, we're educators, but this is obviously a big asset that we have here and a big responsibility. So I guess to kind of summarize three things, one, we're embarrassed about the process, we're upset that we cannot hand this pool over to our community and our students previously, but we do feel throughout, the safety has been what we've, has been a diagnosis and trying to do the most safe thing we could and not, even when we had a little window to open the pool, you know, just kind of our better nature was not to open it to keep testing. And I think going forward, one, I like this company out of Jersey. I think we've learned things from them and I think that we should go at least with a monthly, you know, more intensive lab results that we can then share with board, community, whoever, and make the changes we need to. So we're hoping we're in the bottom of the ninth here and have already opened this pool and I know there's been a lot of frustration that you probably didn't, uh, dealing with directly, so that's what we can give you at this time.
Was this the lowest responsible bidder?
He was actually only bidder, but he was, there was a local government, actually Goodyear, Sloughsburg, using for their outdoor pool and they did come and introduce with a, you know, a reasonably good reference. And again, I, I don't know, maybe I would split the job up and had the water company, you know, right after everything was done, you know, they said, okay, see you, you know, and you go second guess it, you know. But I do feel now we're in the right hands. I do think, or actually, just looking at what in seven days, what occurred, it's just unfortunate those seven days went and all this stuff.
You said there are two types of tests. One was is the lab test where it's.
Yeah, and the other is basically at the poolside, almost what you do in your backyard pool.
If we're getting too good a reading, we would be okay?
Well, we actually were getting fairly, our poolside wasn't necessarily bad ratings, they just weren't as deep. There wasn't much information that you could get out of the size of the pool.
And the department wants more information.
Um, they wanted the lab tests, uh, once they, we got into this conundrum with colors and everything, you know, they insist on the lab tests. They don't usually, I, those news to me. You know, we'd be going for years with just basically the same tests you do in your backyard pool, you know, the shaker and the colors.
Doesn't that, there's a concern?
Yeah, a lot more, you know, it's a larger testing thing, but it's the same principle. But now I think again, there's a protection for our community, everything, once a month, it's not a huge cost, we just get the lab tests. And obviously they're going to want to see the latest ones, we could do them every day. So really for these 15 days, we have lab tests every day. And we're going to continue at least till we're open and then at that point go to either bi-weekly or monthly.
It's very frustrating.
To be honest with you, thank you for your honesty and right after.
Would the board like to move on?
Yeah, I'd like to move on.
So I have a technical question.
Okay.
Actually, like financial question, if you don't mind. Is that okay?
I just want to clarify that this is, I just have to.
So my question financially, would the contractor take any of the damages incurred?
Well.
Would they credit us for any of the extra costs now incurred for paying to use other pools, for having to get another renter?
That's, that part of our work has really not moved along. We have a performance bond from the contractors, we at least have that as a good, you know, bank to go after. The costs have been those outside costs, so there hasn't been a huge loss, you know, things, by the way, things that could have happened that we avoided for whatever it's worth. The pool can sometimes, we take the water up, I was going to find out, lift, we got the aggregate coming loose, I mean, we could be, we're going to talk about emptying the pool right now. I mean, and during this process, we went full circle on some days, it was like, you know. But, so yes, there are real costs and they're identifiable and we have a real, we have really begun that part.
And procedure wise, there's a lot of talk about if we got the bid, started the work kind of late in the game, should we anticipate better, you know, timetables, that things happen sometimes not on schedule, always be a little ahead, could we have started to work sooner?
We.
Other lessons learned?
Well, I think there is, I think, and again, three weeks, we love to have three weeks, whether it's on the front end, I mean, again, we.
We made a difference.
Or, you know, we didn't do it before the May vote, we did it after the May vote, we put it on the street in June. We actually ended up extending it because we initially, we said, how much bars of performance bond, I requested the performance bond in there. So that had five days. Kids were open in June and June, and board worded it actually at July 50. Even with that, even with the tight construction timeline, August 11th, we were filling the pool. And when I talked to the company over now, you know, our primary aquatics company that we use out of New Jersey, I said, you know, were we, was I ambitious? He said, you know, it was a tight schedule, but the fact you were filling the pool the 11th, you should have expected by the end of August to have completely LEO. So even with a, you know, not the early start, we could have brought this in. It was, in my own opinion, a weakness on the installer's aquatics side of his business, the guidance seems to be poor with water quality. Haven't seen it for a week, but with good management, I think we had that notice.
It's always an issue this morning with any project, you know, flash.
Yeah, let me ask you.
From all five of the same two perspectives, I understand and, you know, appreciate that it is a priority for our district to make sure the kids are safe and this should be the case. There have been reports in the past about certain observations, so contracting someone who's going to test the water professionally. Because again, it's, we have the luxury of having this pool, but it's also a responsibility that comes along with it and a risk, health and safety wise, and so to have some professional testing water constantly. If it's beyond what the Department of Health requires, I think that would be the way to go from this experience. Because I've heard over the years some hints about, you know, overcorning, you know, this or that.
I can see how it could happen.
Right. Because we're asking our other staff and facilities people to do work that is beyond, about beyond.
We have three certified pool operators, which we're very happy and lucky to have, you know, very good with the team. So we do have a good cadre internally, but I mean, a lot of that.
So it has to be sent out, it has to be. So it has to be sent out, it has to be professionalized. And now my, my next question, thank you very much, uh, is to whoever, not that you want to answer, but it's related to our athletes and how we're accommodating this, you know, lack of practice and training that has, um...
I dig into it.
You wanna really dig into that, too?
We've lost some, um, some time in the pool. We have been using RCC, we've using Felix Festa, I mean, I'm not making like, you've lost time. Felix Festa, we've used, we've used RCC, some of them don't have diving abilities, so I think that group of kids was especially negatively impacted. Uh, and on the local level, there was, there were two weeks that you had to go away, that you were referred to them home. So we're, that's, that's truly the loss. We'd love to be on the monitor, so we're not, you know, those were, that's how the programs have been impacted. The classroom use of the pool starts in the second ten weeks, so that has a, a, an impact in the school day visit.
The team.
That occurs in October, it's been a long, real...
Now, when the team, or the students lose time at the pool, there is a financial aspect to that, because we have to think, you know, our juniors or seniors are qualifying for races that qualify them for a scholarship in college. It could be really thousands of dollars that are maybe hard to put a figure to it, but it's happening. You know, let alone, you know, being accepted into a certain school, that's your dream school to go to, or being recruited in the first place. It's, it's what they've worked on, you know, it's not, I'm not saying, I'm not looking at you, but you were volunteered to answer this. There's a lot at stake beyond what he's the eye, and, and, you know, as a parent or class athlete, I totally, um, feel horrible that our kids should go through this. And, and we're learning lessons, what we're seeing to happen, and what we can do better in the future. But we also need to support them right now, and, you know, save whatever's eligible.
Yeah, we actually, we even started down a path of, can we do a, you know, exhibition, we do something else.
Something for that to be seen by coaches.
I know that Andy has to close those doors, but it gets very tough within the larger, uh, section to make any kind of deviations. So we, so, I mean, if we didn't do anything, we'd...
What I've been educated about is my kids did not, did not, uh, is that that number of hours you log, if I'm not mistaken, is important to achieve certain stats. So for that, I don't know if it's...
Well, that's why I was hoping if we do an exhibition, even if that time would count as something, again, I don't understand all the answers. Uh, yeah, I mean, this was our biggest frustration on the school, we were, you know, I know I had some, very, very frustrating, so, you feel it.
You're not proud of, uh, and like us with anything related to their, you know, sports, dances, or what we're doing to...
But, you know, I think Anthony touched upon that. He's been in almost daily contact with Andy, Andy with Kirk, the coach, and trying to get places for the kids to practice. It's, uh, it's hit, miss, and, you know, something that we could have anticipated six weeks ago. Andy would have been able to develop a better schedule for us, but this is like a continuing pain that goes on each day. And so, you know, he'll call Anthony, what can you tell me? Play it for three more days, and then he'll try to get North Rockland or, or, uh, Tappan Zee, maybe it was one, one of the places, RCC. And, uh, some of the places had been named, we have six. The, the kids have been disadvantaged because of the inability to get the pool in the state that it needs to be in. There's no way it should occur that way.
All right, any other comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, public participation, since public participation with respect to any school district business, decision in the last thirty minutes, if you have a, a power to your name, please step up to the podium, say your name, school affiliation, your senior marks of the board. Again, pursuant to policy, twelve thirty, four twenty-three, according, uh, to the break, we have specific remarks, regarding any district personnel or student. And again, it's not a question and answer, but, Melissa, thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Melissa Reaver. I'm from Charrodingen School, Southern Central School District. I sent all of your email earlier this afternoon, uh, having an issue with the busing. I understand that Governor Cuado asked all municipalities to try and combine services in order to make a better deal for the taxpayer. And although I agree with that, the only problem is that there are some students who are falling to the wayside, and it's having a detrimental effect on them. One of them being my son. They changed the busing from Chestnut Ridge to Bosse's, and now they pick up all of these children who go to one specific school from all over the county. So my son is spending about an hour and twenty minutes, hour and a half, on the bus each way. And he has a letter from the doctor, the neurologist, and, uh, sorry, I missed a public speaking. So I was told that we can go back to Chestnut Ridge and not have Bosse's do the run, and I did all the legwork. So I spoke to Chestnut Ridge, and it's not a problem, they can start the busing tomorrow. I am having an issue getting it done through the school system. He cannot be on the bus this morning. It's, he's got issues, and I will fight until the very last breath of my body for this child. So I sent you all an email. I have doctor's notes, numerous emails, numerous phone calls, you name it. I have Find My iPhone pictures from his commute to and from school, and the times stamped for each picture of where he is in the county and New Jersey. So I'm asking to make sure that you look at the different policies that we're doing. And I know that we all want to save the taxpayers money. I, for one, love the taxpayers, and that's what my job is, is to protect the taxpayers. So that's what I want to do, but we cannot put anybody's life in jeopardy for their learning because it's making a difference in his learning capacity. So just read your emails, reach out to me, if there's anything I can do to make this better, I absolutely will. Thanks.
Thank you. Have you seen, have you seen your doctor's account, Brad, and how this happened?
So, um, thank you.
See you later. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Reiki, I'm fourteen and ten three. I'd like to share with you a different perspective on the busing issue. I want to describe to you how my social and academic life are affected by the walk-in bus, one drop-off call. First, let me tell you a little bit about last year. Last year, my mother had to be banned every single day, rain or shine. And since I'm one of a few siblings who don't have buses, you have to understand that I was not the only one needing to be picked up for a drop-off. So my mother and baby sister spent literally the entire day in the car, leaving me with a cranky baby and exhausted mom. Try to inform our governor of those circumstances. And by the way, had I not only the bus provided, which was at three fifteen, I would miss math and earth science, two region subjects crucial to my diploma. My brother was a Smiths at six o'clock PM, which was a hard time for both of my parents, meaning that I had to take a car service home every single day, which was thirteen hours' day, so go do a math. And since pickup and drop-offs ranged from seven o'clock AM to six o'clock PM, my parents were busy the entire day driving, driving around town, picking me up and dropping me. This year, um, the time school starts has been adjusted to eight fifteen for junior and high school, and nine o'clock for elementary school, meaning that I arrived at school at that hour late and my sister fifteen minutes early, because that's the only time we used to see the buses. Another difference is that my sister and I, neither my sister nor I had buses on the way home. So we either had to be picked up, picked up, and we're different times, so either our bus had to be picked up or take a car service home. So that is another thing, so basically, many of my students had to be picked up. Anyway, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak, and I hope my words are, and that I understand everything. And please, can I get me my bus status?
Thank you.
Evening, hi. My name is James Galvin, I'm the father of Katie Galvin, one of the high school swimmers. First off, I want to thank you all for the, uh, the seriousness with which you've taken our request. I know you guys have gotten emails from me, and I'm sure from others on the team, regarding the situation, and a lot of the frustration that we've had, and I admit, I can't claim tonight voted for bear, but seeing the presentation tonight is by far the most information we've gotten, probably cumulatively over the last month. So I appreciate the clarity you brought this. At least now we understand what happened, uh, what's being done, where the, where the pool sits at the moment, and at least a better sense, even visually, to see, okay, this looks like we're headed toward a better position than where we've been. So appreciate that. Obviously, a lot of things we can learn from this, a couple of points just to clarify. When we speak to the, the training that's needed for the swimmers, it's kind of like marathon training, you're a renman marathon. You can't pack that amount of training needed to run a marathon in like two or four days, you need a few months of that. Same thing with swimming. You need to pack in the yardage now, so swimmers can taper in the latter part of the season to be ready for counties, for sections, and over the states. So it's kind of irreplaceable time. So to that end, I'm optimistic that the pool will be ready to go in the next few days. We'll see where it goes. And we appreciate continued detailed information, just if it keeps getting pushed back, so we can make the right decisions as parents for where our, our kids should be swimming, because we do have daughters, mine included, who are looking for, for a bigger future potentially in swimming, and don't want to sacrifice that for the, for the sake of this season, if there's a bigger future ahead of them. From a point of clarification, uh, just, while we appreciate the information you've brought here, kind of things should have been anticipated a bit better. I've never seen a construction program go off on time with no edges on the backend. We knew this was an extremely tight timeframe, hiring a pool company in July, or, or print out the meeting in June, the busiest time of the year for pool companies, probably wasn't the wisest decision. With all due respect, this is the kind of thing that could have been, should have been anticipated six weeks ago. A plan should have been in place for this as a contingency. And, you know, from a frustration perspective, as a parent, as a taxpayer, just having a bit more knowledge and clarity on this, pardon the pun, going into the season would have, I think, greatly diminished a lot of the angst that a lot of the parents and swimmers felt. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, see, now, I'll point that forth with the meeting, uh, superintendent's house. No, all right. At this time, Chair can have a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Second.
Second.
The body, all in favor, please, say aye.
Aye.
The public attention's next.